It looks like we have Kathy is here, Leif is here. And Kevin Porter just emailed me, so he should be on shortly.
Okay, well, just gonna give it another minute. I want to welcome everybody that's, that has an interest in the informational public hearing we're gonna have on the Butternut Creek Drive project. And I'll just, in order to kill just a little bit of time, what we're gonna do is, is that the, we've got some housekeeping to do first, so it'll take about five minutes. After we do that, close to 7:05, we will open up the informational public hearing for everyone. We will have a presentation by the applicant, which will last between 10 and 15 minutes. And then after that, this informational meeting is for you, for all the neighbors. And if you want to speak, you can raise your hand, unmute yourself. We'll have Stephanie kind of moderate. And I would ask that you identify yourself and the, the location that you live, and ask whatever questions related to the project that you'd like. The board will be listening. We really won't be reacting, because tonight is just the informational hearing. There'll be actions that will be required from your questions. If they don't answer them tonight, they will answer them between now and the next meeting. And that'll be all part of our due diligence in regard to any approval or any, any consideration for this project. So with that in mind, I would also ask that if the question's been asked and answered, that unless there's a different, we would not need to reiterate it. So I thank you all for coming, and this'll be kind of a, a little bit of a new operation, because usually we do these in, in together. So this'll be our first large informational meeting. So just give it a little patience, and we'll get through all of this, and make sure everybody is heard. So it's now 7:03. We do now have a quorum, Nick?
Yes, Kevin Porter just joined.
Okay, welcome, Kevin, thank you. It's March 11th, I'm Peter Weber, Chair of the Planning Board. This is the, we had two work sessions, Cravik Drive and Amazon on Manly Center Road. Nick, do we have anything scheduled for next work session?
Yep, we'll schedule Cravik Drive again for another work session.
Okay, that sounds good. We had submitted the minutes, may I have a motion to approve?
Peter, it's Kathy, I'll make a motion.
Thanks Kathy, a second please.
Pete, Joe, I'll second it.
Okay, Joe, welcome, thank you. All in favor?
Kathy, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Peter, aye. Joe said he, he made the motion. Alright, it is now 7:04, I just, about, can you, we tell on the screen about how many people we have?
Thirty-one, thirty-one.
Stephanie?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one?
Yep, well, there's, there's thirty-one in total, and it appears that there's... I'm getting just over a dozen.
Okay.
Of potential neighborhood guests.
Okay, well, I really, I'll reiterate my first comment, I want to thank all of the neighbors for their interest and for turning out, and offering their questions. And we'll, we as the applicant will again start this, and at the same time afterwards, we'll have an opportunity for everyone to ask whatever questions they want to have relating to the project. And then we will take that into all of those questions and responses, and there'll be more that'll have to come out, and we'll have this through our due diligence and approval or not approval process, working this through for the next few meetings. So with that in mind, who on the behalf of the applicant was gonna speak first?
Peter, can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Kathy, aye.
Peter, aye.
Okay, bye.
Kevin, Leif, and Kevin, okay, thank you. Thanks Jamie, usually she just nudges me, but she can't really nudge me on these protocols. Alright, who was gonna speak on behalf of the applicant first?
Chairman Weber, it's Tom Douglas, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you perfectly, Tom.
Okay, thank you, I want to...
I just want to make sure all of the applicant, all the neighbors can hear as well. Alright, go ahead, Tom.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman Weber, and respect to board members. I want to introduce Canal Crossing of DeWitt to the board tonight. It is a 144-unit apartment complex. It is designed for upscale in feel, one and two-bedroom units, including rooftop terraces. It will consist of three buildings. The project will be developed in three phases, starting with building A, B, and C, the main entrance to come off of Butternut Drive, down at the bottom. And I want to take just a moment to kind of introduce the team, because I think with any successful project, it really comes down to the team that's behind the project. And I think we've put together a formidable team. Holmes, King, and Caulquist will be the principal architects on the project. The gentleman's my left, Scott Freeman with KFA, managing partner, will do the landscape architecture. Rudy Zona with Zona Engineering will do the engineering of the project. And I do have various partners that are not here tonight, so I will be the spokesperson for them as well. We're asking the board to grant us a...
Excuse me, Tom, if I can just ask Mr. Caulquist to recuse himself from any discussion or anything on this matter?
Oh, sure.
I will be doing that.
Thank, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leif, yes.
Continue.
Please.
Tonight, we're asking the board to, to grant us a zone change, we would like to move the project. The parcel is currently zoned R2 to an R3. The, under the R2, it really doesn't give us the density that we're looking for. This is an expensive project, as you can tell by the design and the materials that we're putting into it. Obviously, there's been a lot of thought, we did have a meeting Sunday, and invited the neighbors to join us, we were looking for feedback. We answered, I, hopefully, many of their questions, and we took into consideration a lot of their concerns. And by that is, and I, and I think the, the principal architects here have done a great job in scaling of the buildings, so that it's compatible with the homes along Kenny Drive. We have multiple entrances and means of egress to the project, and we have submitted to the board a, a traffic, a preliminary traffic finding from Rudy Zona, who did a comprehensive traffic study on Shopping Town Mall just recently. So I'm not gonna spend too much time talking about the project, because I'm gonna turn it over to professionals, and I'll, I'll introduce Scott first to talk about the, the site itself. And then I'm here tonight to answer any questions from the neighbors or the board members. But we're excited about the project, I think it's a benchmark. It's a, a nice compliment to what will become of Shopping Town Mall in years to come. And whatever becomes of Shopping Town Mall, I feel like by establishing upscale housing, that it will complement any of the types of uses that would be desirable for the town when Shopping Town is developed. And for that, I thank you for your time tonight, and I'll turn it over to Scott Freeman.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Stephanie, this is probably a good, a good graphic to start off with, you know, the site, the site's got a great location in DeWitt, and it actually, being down, located right next to Shopping Town Mall, this could become a big future project, and could become the town center for DeWitt. So we're, we're very fortunate to be right adjacent to that on this piece of property, and we really look forward to, to providing some housing in the center of DeWitt, which we think is important. Just something we, we did, we thought about when, when marketing and living in a community, we thought, okay, how, how are people gonna get there? And what we've done in Red, from the south, if you go 481 South, you get off the interchange, you'd enter the site through the primary entrance, Butternut. And then if you came from 481 North and got off at the exit, again, I think you would agree that that would be the primary access coming in through Butternut. And if you were coming from 690, I have an office in East Syracuse, I would access the site from off of 690, I'd take toll paths. So I think, I think primary, the primary entrance and gateway for this project will be off of Butternut. In, in gold, we do have, or not gold, that's a poor choice, we, yellow is pedestrian flow, I'll get into that later, but the, the orange is local, there is a local element, if you're coming off of Five or coming off Erie Boulevard, there will be a smaller percentage of people coming to the, the secondary entry, I call it. But the, the bottom line is, when you design a community, it's, it's important to have access throughout, and this site is, we're very fortunate to have access on two roads for safety and emergency vehicles, the fire department, we, we met with, and, and they, they liked the plan, they said, you know what, it's, it's a good idea to connect those two roads. So I just wanted to, wanted to start off with that. So if you, if you wouldn't mind, Stephanie, if you can go to the, the overall site plan, just to go over some, some basics. And we are looking at this plan in, in plan view, and anyone that's been out there knows there's a lot more to it than the, the two dimensions. And Holmes King Caulquist, in a, in a few minutes, we'll get to a nice 3D model that, that shows us. But by the numbers, we have an 11-acre site, and to the, to the north, we're gonna preserve that buffer, that hillside, there's a lot of mature trees, a nice slope, and it actually adds to the, the buffer to the south of the residential neighborhood located there. To the, to the west, you know, we have the Shopping Town Mall, and we look at, we look at this project as a first connection point to it, and if you, a little later, we'll zoom in, what, what we plan on doing is having sidewalks from the upper, the upper building, we'll call Building One on Kenny. The middle building, we'll call, at the, the bottom of the L, we'll call Building Two. And then the gateway building off of Butternut, we'll call that Building Three. But, but it's our intent to work with the town to provide a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood that's in a park-like setting, where this is different than a lot of projects, if you drive around town and look at sites where every square foot of the site is, is paved, building with leftover green space. And I can honestly say, it's been a pleasure working with the town and Holmes King Caulquist to develop a plan that has a lot of green space, and a lot of opportunity for pedestrians, for not only the users of this site, but for the neighborhood. There's, there's access to the canal, there's access to Erie Boulevard, there's access to future shopping, Shopping Town once that becomes developed. And Tom can, if you can jump in and talk about the piece of property across the street that's part of this project for a second.
Thanks, Scott, sure. Von Lang, most of you are familiar with Von Lang, an attorney, he is also the driving influence behind the Exelis building that was redeveloped. When he acquired that from Agway, that was a vacant building, and he was successful not only in refurbishing the building, but luring Exelis from downtown, which employs almost 900 employees. What he has offered to the town, he currently owns the land that we are proposing to build Canal Crossing of DeWitt on. If you were to go across Butternut Drive, that land that runs along 41, it's approximately 21 acres. He has offered to the town to donate that and construct a pedestrian-friendly bridge over the, the creek there, and offer that as some type of a park use for the residents of DeWitt, as well as the, the residents of Canal Crossing.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. The other, I think I wanted to point out, one point I overlooked, my Rudy Zona, who was unable to be here tonight, has a, a software program called Trip Generation, and he, he wrote, he has a memo and some preliminary calculations. We wanted to be, see where we stood with, with the numbers, what kind of, what kind of traffic would be generated. And according to this Trip Generation program, based on thi- this plan on the full build-out, you're looking at approximately during peak hours, 29 to 40, 40 trips per hour. And just as a measuring stick for other, other projects, the DOT typically doesn't even ask for a, a Trip Generation-type study until you, until you get into the 100, 100-plus cars per hour. So it's, there will be more cars coming here, but I think it's based on our circulation study, I think a lot of people will be coming in off of Butternut, and there will be people on Kenny Street, but I, I just don't foresee this as being a significant traffic concern. So Trip Generation. But it, but in terms of what we've done and what we haven't done, what we have done is, is we've, we've just, we put together a very detailed grading and drainage plan with contours. So that, that entry road from Kenny to Butternut, there's a 40-foot grade change going from top to bottom. And with that, with Holmes King Caulquist, we sat down and decided early on that we're not gonna, we're not gonna level the site and build, build three terraces. The, the buildings, each of the buildings, especially Building One is terraced, and Jamie, Jamie will get into this in, in a few minutes. Building Two and Building Three are, are level, but the, but the slope around them is, is built right into the, the topography, so that's important to note. Stormwater, we know the water's gonna come downhill, we're, we preliminarily graded it and drained it to come to those blue depressions that are showing along Butternut. We, we typically work with the New York State DEC to do that, we're a little early on the process. They may hold water, they may not hold water. Either way, we're gonna make those an amenity, it's a great, a great opportunity.
It's a great vision.
Utilities, there's, there's water and fire hydrants both on Kenny and Butternut. We've, we've met with the fire department, and we've preliminarily shared the, the entry drive, they were in agreement with it. And we talked about access through the, each building has its own parking lot with a, with a loop road, and they were very comfortable with it, but they said we have to develop it a little further and work with the board. And the architecture from Holmes King Caulquist has to be developed a little bit further to, to talk about fire ratings, again, things that Holmes King Caulquist will handle in a few minutes. Sanitary's available, gas is available, power is available. One thing that we take very seriously, and I think is gonna be very important for this project, is lighting. And the buzzwords are, it's gonna be dark sky compliant, and there's gonna be no light at your property line. We'd like to take that a step further, and not only comply with that, but we're gonna suggest using lower, lower light poles to further reduce the visual lighting impact. The other thing that, that I would also note is, building, the residential's houses along Kenny Street will have a glimpse of Building One, Holmes King Caulquist will get into this, the, the first level, and second level there, it's, the height is minimized there, the, and the building step into the site. So when you're in your backyards, walking between the trees, you're gonna be looking over the tops of these buildings, so I think your, your visual impact will be minimized. Plantings, all the, all the light green on this project is lawn, all the green circles are trees. We really look forward to providing a very green project to, to, to screen and, and cool the, cool the pavements. There'll be sidewalks in front of each building, and there'll be a sidewalk, an ADA-compliant sidewalk connecting each of the three buildings. And then each of the three buildings will be connected to a Kenny Street sidewalk and a Butternut sidewalk. And, and within our project, we will put in the sidewalks along our frontage. And in the future, we're looking forward to the town of DeWitt extending those, those sidewalks to Shopping Town, to Erie Boulevard, to the Canal Park, which are all, all great impacts. So that from, from a preliminary point of view, from a landscape architecture's viewpoint, I feel like we got a great start, and there's some things we gotta work, work out with the neighbors and, and with the board, and we look forward to keeping the project rolling. With, with that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Jamie and give you some architectural descriptions.
Good evening, everybody, this is Jamie Williams, I'm a Senior Associate with HKK Architects, can everyone hear me?
Yep, you're on.
Yep. Okay, appreciate the opportunity to present tonight. In, in addressing the overall architectural volume on here, architectural massing and, and imagery of the project, one of the things that we acknowledge early on is a concern on the part of the neighbors as far as building scale on Kenny. So we have tried to design this to ameliorate some of those concerns. Specifically, the site slopes down fairly significantly to the west from the existing properties to what we call Phase One, Building A, such that there's a significant enough slope change that we're able to gain an additional floor on the building that fronts Kenny, while maintaining relatively even building mass along Kenny. There's additional building mass and height that we achieve that sets back along Building A, using setbacks from the street elevation to what we're referring to as loft penthouse levels. So the building, as it presents itself to Kenny, is relatively low-scale. And then as we recede back into the site, away from the street, the, the building height changes or raises a bit. And then as we get into Buildings B and C, as Scott had indicated, we have significant grade changes down through the site. So the impact of those building masses will be fairly minimal when viewed from Kenny. One of the other things that we, we wanted to address is project phasing, and, and it is the, it's, it's Tom's desire to, that Phase One would be Building A along Kenny. And one of the reasons for that is that the, most of the residential amenities for the residents will be found in that building. So from a development standpoint, it makes sense to, to build that piece first. The advantage of completing Phase One first will mean that the remaining phases, Buildings B and C, can be largely mobilized from Butternut, so the impact along Kenny is minimized at that point.
Detention, Jason, and Rob will be part of that as well.
Yep. As far as the building architecture, what you're looking at are basically early building masses. But the intention of the architecture is to break down those masses with a modulating rhythm across the buildings, where the overall building will be broken down into a series of smaller zones or nodes that will be connected by entry, edge, entry points that we, will be largely glazed. So, so the building mass that you would see on the site plan is largely broken down with manipulation of the facade, playing with shadow, playing with solid versus void, glazing versus solid, et cetera. So the goal is to break down one large mass into a series of smaller ones. As far as the architectural imagery, again, this is, we're early into the design on this, but the desire is to, one, have a design direction that is reflective of the town's desires, two, and enable an overall modern approach to the architecture, as opposed to a more traditional design. The advantage of the more modern design that we're showing with flat roofs, et cetera, is that we're able to reduce the mass of the building, whereas if we were taking a more traditional approach with sloped roofs, the building actually increases fairly significant in height when you're applying sloped roofs to buildings like this. We're also able to support rooftop amenities, which are important to the program of the building. Natural-looking materials, that's our intention, consistent with the park-like environment that we're hoping to present here. Natural colors and materials, smooth stone base, possibly slate. Obviously, as I said, we're fairly early in the design process, but, but the effort on the part of the entire design team is to present an overall design that we feel will fit very well into the natural setting here. As Scott indicated, there will be a lot of plantings, they will help not only environmentally, but help to shield and break down the mass of the buildings. As you can see in the image you're looking at now, again, as I, as I'd indicated, the, the scale of the architectural on Kenny is significantly broken down. And then as one recedes back into the site, and as the site drops down significantly, the, the increased mass of the buildings running back through the site are not, as not perceived quite so much from Kenny. We feel very strong, we feel very strongly about the site solution and the architectural design, as Scott had indicated. We're hopeful that this architectural direction and level of excellence that we think, that we think that we can bring to this, will, will hopefully establish a standard of excellence that will, will hopefully inform that much larger development that is coming soon on the Shopping Town site.
Well, it's not a question, but just while you have that slide up, in earlier...
Yeah, and if we could take control of it, we'll, we'll...
Wait, one second.
We'll take you for a spin around the site.
Before you do that, Stephanie? Stephanie?
Yes, Peter.
Could, could I be heard, please? Can we go back to that slide?
Oops.
Can we go back to the other slide, the last one?
Yes, Peter, I'm, I'm working on regaining control here. There we go. You should be able to see the last one.
What I wanted to point out, because often we see these plans, we've been advised, the planning board, that when you have HVAC systems, they end up on the top, and it doesn't look anything like what's presented. So my understanding is that there'll be individual HVAC systems, and this'll reflect the, an accurate picture of, of what the rooftops would look like.
Yeah, so it looks like Jamie is trying to speak, and he's muted, it looks like they're dealing with it.
And you can mute yourself, okay. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the primary, the primary HVAC units for the residential units will, will be within the units themselves. Building, building HVAC units will be screened at the roof level, or pulled away from the perimeter, away from the, the outside of the building so as to be minimized, if not screened completely. So we're, we're, we're very aware of that. You can, if you, if you look at the imagery that's on the screen now, you can see some of those loft penthouse units, and the HVAC units, HVAC units would be nestled in between them so as to be minimized.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
If the architectural team is prepared to take over, you can do so.
Yeah, go ahead, you could go back. I apologize, but I wanted to make sure that was clear because it's so, it looks so clean now and we wanted to be sure it retains that, that look.
Could you repeat that, Peter?
I just said, I appreciate that. I just wanted to point out to the neighbors what we had been told before, that it, that you won't see a lot of roof HVAC systems. You'll see what you actually see in that 3D model.
Yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I wanted to make sure while we had that up.
Other questions?
You want to circle around now, like you were going to take us on a tour?
Yeah.
Actually, it appears that Bonnie Strunk has a question.
Yes, I do. I could, I would just like to clarify that we'll be, this is a presentation, an informational presentation, and that people will be given the opportunity to speak and possibly ask questions if they want at the end of this presentation, instead of interrupting the presentation. Can you clarify that?
Yes, I wasn't trying to interrupt, I wanted to point out.
That's what I thought, Peter, but I just wanted to check and make sure.
This whole informational hearing is for you and, and your neighbors.
Okay, so, we'll let them finish the presentation and then we can make a, ask questions or give, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, as you, as you can see, we're, we're running down along Kinney Street.
Kinney Road.
Bring this lower. And starting to approach Building A. This is, this is, what you're looking at right now is essentially a section through Kinney Street. This is probably one of the more telling drawings that we could show that, that speaks to the slope, the existing slope of Kinney and how the, the building presents its, Building A, how it presents itself to Kinney such that at the street front, we're really looking at a two-story building. And because of the slope of Kinney, the tops of that second floor are really no higher than the tops of the one-story existing houses on Kinney. And then, the remaining parts of Building A, as, as they start to grow and scale, are set back from the street. So, as one perceives it from Kinney, you're really looking at a two-story elevation. And it's only really when you get into the, into the building complex that you start to see the scale of the building rise up. And then, as you move to Buildings B and C, you're, you're, you're moving so significantly through the slope of the site that those, that those buildings are, are, as we had indicated earlier, basically looking over the tops of them from Kinney. Now, you can see we're working our way around and down the side of Building A, which would be facing the existing parking lot. And then, now you can see the space between Buildings, Buildings A and B with Building C in the background as we work our way down through the site. Again, a lot of effort has been made to break down the scale of the buildings by establishing the penthouse levels that are set back from the main facade of the building so that they're, so, so as to break down the overall mass. And now, we're on Butternut, which, as Scott had indicated previously, would be the, the primary entrance to the site where we expect the bulk of the traffic would come from, with Kinney as the secondary. Just a second. Voila, trees. But you can see that line of trees on the right here is, is the slope up to the backs of the properties on Kinney so that this development will largely be masked by tree, tree scapes on that slope. And now, we're inside the complex. Again, looking toward, looking toward that hill with the trees and the houses on Kinney behind it. Any questions?
Is that the end of the presentation?
Yes, Peter, thank you.
Okay, great. So, now, now, the, it's, we'll open it up, the floor to the neighbors to ask questions. I'll just reiterate what I said, please speak up, raise your hand, we'll say your name and your address that you live and ask the questions. The applicant will respond or take time, get back to you at some point. And we'll go through everyone that's here. I just also ask, though, if you, if the question's been asked before and responded to, that we don't ask it again. So, with that in mind, who would the neighbors would like to start?
It looks like Bonnie was the first to raise a hand and then Ann Donahue will be next.
Bonnie, go ahead.
Hi, Ken. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to clarify, will the drawings that have been included in the presentation tonight be added to the Butternut Senior Project that the town board has on the website?
Yes, we can add them all.
Okay. Can somebody, on, on the Kinney Street, and it's Kinney Street, it's, it's Kinney Road, I'm sorry, they kept saying Kinney Street, which is in East Syracuse, which causes some confusion. And there's no Kinney Drive that I'm aware of. But, looking at the presentation on Kinney, there's a round white building. What is that?
This is, this is Jamie Williams again. That is a, that is a piece of the, the front of Building A that is one of the amenities, one of the common amenities for the residents in the project. And that's for the resident, for all of the residents in the project. That would, and, and again, accessed from some adjacent terraces, but that's primarily common space, meeting space, and dining.
Okay, thank you. The presentations that have been made so far include some information that says, for example, on looking at the zoning requirements, that you're not quite in conformity with the requirements. We have some concerns about issues like setbacks and things like that. They can't adequately be addressed without a survey. Could we ask that a copy of the survey be included in the Butternut Senior Project file in the, with the town?
Bonnie, this is Nick Colty-Coble. I will add that to the website if it's not already up there.
Okay, it's not there now. So, if that could be added, that'd be really helpful to address issues of, 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 of environments. Just to clarify, there was a, there was a statement at the beginning of this presentation that the applicant asking the board, and I thought they said they were asking the board today to change zoning from R2 to R3. Could you just clarify that this is an informational meeting and that no consideration of the zoning change would be made based upon the presentation today?
Correct. That is, that's the, that's accurate.
Okay, thank you. One of the primary concerns that folks on Kinney Road have is this. Currently, it's zone R2. It has 21 one-family residences. Building A has 53 units. That means that the traffic using Kinney Road is going to be at least double as far as residential use is concerned. For example, here, there's a lot of background noise.
Yeah, could people mute their microphones, please, if they're not being, asking questions? Thank you.
People that are, people that are going to be living here are going to realize that a lot of the really important quality of life amenities, such as access to parks, for example, access to Ryder Park, access to the Erie Canal Park, access to Butternut Trail, access to Cedar Bay Park, are all going to be accessible through going east on Kinney Road, down to Westminster, to the stop sign at Butternut, another stop sign on the other side of Butternut. So, it's going to initially increase the amount of traffic that those of us living on Kinney. And actually, it's going to impact everybody in the Jonathan Craig Estates because it's going to tie up the traffic at the stop sign at Westminster and the traffic sign at Butternut. So, it's going to have a tremendous impact on our quality of life because people, and even going to Wegmans, once you live here, you're going to realize that getting the Wegmans, you're going to want to go, you're going to want to go through Kinney, over to Vindham and then down Genesee to be able to access Wegmans, to access Fayetteville, to access Manthas. And in the prior presentation, all of the prior materials have indicated that the main entrance to the project would be on Kinney. I understand that's now been changed, even though it's not in the material with the, with the board. The other concern that we have is that this is one of the, this is one of the traditional neighborhoods, what the town of Dewitt has, in its prior zoning, going all the way back to 1956, through the comprehensive plan in 2017, has made a commitment to protect as a traditional residential area with one and two family, sorry, excuse me, one-family residences. So, this simply flies in the face of that. The architecture might be excellent from a design standpoint, but it's completely incompatible with Kinney Road and with Jonathan Craig Estates. It's something that is completely, it's just so unusual. It's actually quite foreign to what you would find in a traditional residential neighborhood in the town of Dewitt. The town's made a commitment to protecting family residences and this just lies in the face of that commitment from the town. There are a lot of other issues, noise pollution, light pollution, visual pollution, that are all going to undermine the commitment to a single-family residence.
And, can I, or whoever, can I ask the applicant, do they want to respond now or do you want to wait to the rest of the questions?
Chairman?
Yes.
Chairman Weber? Yeah, Tom Douglas. Yeah, I'll just respond quickly and be brief to my comments. The, the mall and the proposed development that's occurring with the RFP and so forth, we feel like this project is a nice buffer and fits and complements the overlay district of the mall. And as I said to the neighbors when we met on Sunday, you know, you could basically be looking at the mall under construction for the next 10 or 15 years with no idea what's going to be built there. Or you could look at our project, which will be completed in probably 12 to 14 months, and know exactly what we're proposing. And we will screen the mall from all the issues such as lighting, noise, pollution, because you're, we're talking 11 acres versus the, the scale of the mall. So, we're really a very minor part of the proposed development that's going to be occurring in the next five, 10, 15 years there.
That may be, that may be, but the mall itself is isolated from the residential portion of Kinney Road. You are right, you are a part of the, that's zoned differently. You're asking to be changed from R2 to R3 so that you can be a part of the residential section of Kinney. It's not the same thing at all. It's just a very false equivalence that you're trying to raise here.
This will be all part of our deliberation.
Okay, thank you.
The next person, Stephanie?
The building in, in its accounting for days.
Okay. Looks like Ann Donahue is up. And again, I'd like to remind everybody to please mute if you're not actively speaking.
Hi, good evening. I have been a resident of the town of Dewitt for 67 years. I'm not that old, but I've owned my house on Pickwick for 48 years. And I do live right behind Shopping Town. And I have several, several questions. I am not happy about this idea at all. I agree with Bonnie that the structure of your plan to put this modernized buildings up between two residential areas, you have Pickwick Acres, or Dewitt Acres, I'm sorry, which is the area that I live in, you have Jonathan Craig, and then you have all the houses on Kinney Road. This is going to stick out like a sore thumb. One of the questions I have is how many people in total, if it's fully occupied, are we talking about? Number two is I've heard that it's 55 and older. Is that only senior citizens or does that include families with children? Don't get me wrong, I like kids. I drove a school bus for 34 years, but I also do understand teenagers very, very well. In this neighborhood where I am, we've had several problems. When Shopping Town was at its full blast, we had kids coming down through here, breaking into houses, we had kids breaking into cars, we had drug deals being done in a park that's just below Shopping Town. We've had a standoff just a few months ago at the end of my street. So, there has been problems here. I am concerned if this building, this project that you're going to have, if there's going to be children in there, I'm a little concerned about those kind of problems. Some of my other questions are, these ponds that you have on the end of Butternut, which is directly across the road from the feeder. I invite all of you to come over to my house some really hot July or August night, about 8:00, bring your office with you because you will not be able to sit out there for more than five minutes. The mosquitoes down here in the summer are horrid. Now, you talk about two retaining ponds, Butternut, directly acco- Now you talk about two retaining ponds, Butternut, directly across the street from that feeder. The mosquito problem is going to be enhanced like you've never seen. That's a concern. My other concerns are the 81 project, where they're talking about sending all of the traffic onto 481 coming through DeWitt. Most of the people, when they get off DeWitt, they either going to Fayetteville, or they're going up towards DeWitt itself. And what they do is they turn off East Genesee Street onto Pickwick, and it's used as a cut through. They come down Pickwick, and they come down Butternut. I don't know when you did your traffic study, but this has been a problem for a long time down here. We have central buses that come down through here, we have tractor trailer trucks that come down through here. We have two-stop signs on Butternut that are rarely used. We've had to have the DeWitt police over here several times to stop and write tickets for the people using Butternut Drive as a speedway to cut through up to Kenny and over to God knows where they're going. How are you going to handle the Blue Cross and Blue Shield traffic when, God forbid, this pandemic is over and they're back to full capacity with their parking lot on top of what you've got going? From 2:00 on, you cannot get down Butternut to Kenny and Tow Path because of the Blue Cross and Blue Shield employees leaving. I also understand you have, you're required to have 328 parking spaces, and your plan only calls for 273. Where are the extra cars going to go? My other concern is the property values for not only the people on Kenny Road, but the people in my own neighborhood. The park across the feeder, the feeder on Butternut, that you're talking about, this little bridge over there to make a little park, who's going to clean up the feeder? I don't know if you've taken a look at the feeder, but it is a disgusting mess. We have garbage, we have tires, we have trees, and the land across the feeder, you've got a lot of wildlife over there, you have deer, we have foxes, we have coyotes, and it's basically kind of a mushy land over there. That, that kind of concerns me. And the runoff, that you're talking about, this runoff that's coming off of Kenny Road, down the hill, and into these feeder ponds, when it floods across Butternut Drive and nobody can get up Butternut Drive to Kenny. And the biggest question I have is the construction trucks. Are you telling me that you're going to have the main entrance of this on Butternut? You, you guys have no idea what the traffic is down here on a daily basis. And now you're going to add your traffic and all the construction traffic, I'm assuming is going to be coming down Butternut. Oh, we can hardly wait, we're so excited. I am very disappointed with the town that they're even considering this. You are putting this right smack between three different residential areas, and you're telling me there is no other property in the town of DeWitt that this could go to? There's a huge empty lot at the end of Woodchuck Hill Road that has been completely mowed down. It was supposed to be developed at some point, which it hasn't been.
And, and I don't, I want to just leave this to, not speculation on other sites, but just to any, any more questions you may have.
Well, that's, that's about it. I'm very upset by this, and so are the people in my neighborhood.
I'll let the applicant respond, but there will be a full traffic study done.
I hope so, because the traffic that we have now is unbearable.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to respond, or do you want to move on to hear other questions?
I would like, if I may, I would like the answer to the question of when you're fully occupied in all three buildings, how many people total are we talking about, and are there going to be kids?
And the, the concept, it's upscale, it's a concierge-level service-type apartment project. The rents would dictate that it is 55 and older, adult community. There will not be children in the project per se. It will be seniors, and a good many of those seniors will most likely be traveling to Florida in the winter months. And we anticipate some will have one car, there's one bedrooms in there. We're not going to ever run full occupancy, so we feel very comfortable because it is seniors with a ratio of 1.5 that we will more than adequately park this. We also feel like we fit nicely because what you're, you failed to mention is we're adjacent to the Exelis Building, which is a seven-story building. And to our west, it's, is the Shopping Town Mall site. So when you say we're surrounded by residents, I, I have to beg to disagree. We border a mall and border the parking lot to the Exelis Building and a highway to our east. So I, I only, only neighborhood we touch on is on Kenny Road.
But you still have a residential neighborhood down here that uses Butternut Drive to go and do what they need to do. My biggest problem with your project is that you're taking a very modern project and sticking it in between houses that have been here since the 40, some of them even since the 30s, 40s and 50s, most of them. Like I said, I've been here for 48 years, and I'm, I'm not old, I'm a young chick, I just have an old number. But my concerns are, there's a lot of stuff going on down here, and I know Kenny Road, I've had friends on Kenny Road trying to get out of their driveways during the day. Good luck. And I don't think, you don't live here, you don't understand the concept of what your project is going to add to the traffic down here.
Well, as I said, we will, there will be requesting a full traffic study, and every question that you raised will, will be responded to. Like to move on to.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Very thoughtful. What do we have next?
There's an LM with a hand raised.
We're here.
You want, go ahead.
We're Linda and Joe Morrelli, who live on Westminster Road. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you.
All right, there's been a lot of things talked about, and I agree with both the last two people, a lot of things that they said. But when you're talking, when I'm listening to all this, who is this actually good for? Because certainly the neighbors that live here, at the end of the day, really don't want this. So let me ask you, who is this actually really good for? It's not good for the neighbors of Jonathan Craig, and it's not good for the Pickwick area. The traffic here is terrible at the rush hour times, and already, we, when you come up Kenny, during the rush hour, you have people that cut off, come up Kenny, take a left onto Westminster, travel down Marsh, take a right, then go out and then take a left, Butternut Drive to continue on to, it's 90. Traffic will be a nightmare. You, you talked about the traffic that's going to Butternut Drive, but that's not all that it's going to be, because when you have people that are coming from the west, they cannot access Butternut Drive, so they're going to either have to come one back way or they're going to come out three ways, take a right onto Kenny, and they're going to go up there, and that's where they're going to get their entrance. Okay? And you also talk about, hold on, let me else talk about shopping.
No, no, I just wanted to keep it to, to, as I mentioned before, there'll be a traffic study, so let's move on to what other questions you have.
Okay, you're, you talk about Shopping Town, and I don't know if Tom said something that could be 10 or 15 years in the making. Well, hopefully it's not 10 or 15 years in the making, but you, you don't know what Shopping Town is going to look like. Shopping Town can easily include some of this thing, and some of this, and the land is already there. So you're kind of putting the cart before the horse, I think that, yeah. I mean, I, I just don't know why this is a good thing for the neighborhood. And nobody said why it's, why is it a good thing, Tom, why is it a good thing for the neighborhood?
Any other questions from the, the audience?
I have a question.
Yes, who do we have?
Hi, this is Joseph Hart, calling 6740 Kenny Road.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you, I don't know if everyone else can.
I can only come in through the phone, can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah, I hear a little better, thank you.
Hey, Nick, would you please put the preliminary traffic findings and all documents concerning this project on the website? Because when I picked up, all I got is the plans, the site plan review application, and the short environmental access form, assessment form. So could you make sure that you put the preliminary traffic findings and all documents concerning this project on your site, so we can, all the neighbors can access it?
Hi, Joe, yes.
Thanks, Nick.
I'll touch base with the applicant, make sure we get those documents.
Okay, thank you. These questions probably directed towards Jamie Williams, dealing with the structure, because when he spoke with Building A, the slope changed, there'll be an additional floor. Now, dealing with the documents that I reviewed thus far that you supplied me, Nick, it deals with, the proposed project includes four, four-story apartment buildings with 164 units, one and two bedrooms, site improvements will include 273 parking spaces. Now, dealing with, dealing with the master plan, L001, that is showing only 143 units. Building A, 53, Building B, 38, Building C, 52. Will you please tell me the total number of floors per building?
Oh, yeah, this, this is Jamie Williams. The maximum building height.
May I interrupt, just one moment? Who is it that was asking that question, please? The last speaker?
I'm on, I'm on the phone.
Yeah, yes, can you say your name again, I'm sorry?
Joseph Hart, Tom.
Thank you, Joseph.
You're welcome.
This is Jamie Williams. The, the maximum building height of Building A is four stories, although, as I had indicated earlier, it's essentially two stories when presented to Kenny. And then as it steps back into the site, it steps up to three, and then as you get into the main building, you know, running along the length of the L, it goes to a maximum of four. And the fourth floor is pulled back from the main facades of the building, so that the, the, the building presents three stories, and then there's a fourth story that's recessed back in what we, we refer to as our penthouse floor.
Right. Okay, so Building B will be four floors also?
Building B and C are four also. Similarly, three, three stories presented at the main facade, and then stepping back so that the fourth story is recessed from the facades, as you can see on the right-hand side of this. And again, Buildings, Buildings B and C are significantly depressed on the site below Building A because of the existing slopes.
Okay. Now, dealing with Building A, how many units?
Tom?
Because the total for the site plan is 143, but Mr. Douglas stated 144 units. So I need to know, Building A, how many units?
Joe, Tom Douglas, yeah, the approximate number is 144, give or take a unit or two. We're not there with full CDs at this point, we're really just dealing with the concept and the elevation of the buildings. But Building A, to answer your question, because it has a lot of the meeting rooms and amenities for the other buildings and residents, there's approximately 50 units, give or take a unit or two.
Okay, 50 units. Okay, Building B will still be 38?
Give or take.
Okay, and Building C will be 52?
You know, I, I'm not going to get into pinning down exactly the number of units in each building, I'm going to tell you tonight, for the record, that, that the project will be approximately 144 units. Because it depends on whether they're one bedroom, two bedrooms, and exactly how they lay out, because the meeting rooms haven't been sized and some of the amenities, it's, it would be misleading for me to commit to you tonight to give you an exact number in every building. We're just not there at this point.
I just wanted to make this clear, because a lot of the neighbors were not able to attend a Sunday's meeting. So there's a lot discussed there that changes with tonight, because we were informed that at the meeting, it would start off two floors on Kenny, progressively go up to three floors, wrap around to Butternut, four floors. Now, the question would be, what document correctly reflects the total number of units? How many units per floor in each building? How many units will be, because this is based on a conversation on Sunday, one bedroom, two bedroom, and three bedroom? And which building will contain them? Because Mr. Lang stated that the two-bedroom would be going for $2,200, and the three-bedroom would be going for $3,000. So I know earlier there was a discussion that they had mentioned that just one bedroom, and then like you just mentioned, Tom, two bedrooms, but there is a mention on Sunday by the developer, Mr. Lang, that there would be three bedrooms. So do we know how many bedrooms there are going to be allowed within a unit?
I can tell you that there are no three-bedroom units proposed. It consists of one bedroom, two bedrooms, and then the third option for lease would be, what I refer to is a rooftop terrace unit, which is a two-bedroom. There are no plans for a three-bedroom at this time, for the record. That's correct. There really, there really isn't a market per se for a three-bedroom, because we're talking 55 and older. We're not targeting this and marketing this project towards families. That is not our intent whatsoever, it's 55 and older. So whether it's a one-bedroom or two-bedroom, in all likelihood, it would be a couple empty nesters that would use the second bedroom, in all likelihood, for just furniture and entertaining and so forth.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, dealing with the master plan, because that would relate from the units to the amount of parking spaces, it shows 218. And you're looking, the ordinance, I'm just going by the information that they provided thus far, was 286 at 164 units, that'd be 1.74, and 286 at 143 would be two parking spaces per unit. Do we have any concrete information regarding the parking spaces, because that would, regarding the 68 spaces needed for the variance? Are we concrete anywhere there, Tom?
Well, what we're proposing is a ratio of 1.5. So the 218 number sounds accurate. Joe?
In a, in a variance, there would be some spaces put in reserve if they were to go that far, so, so there would be enough if there were, it was needed.
Correct.
Parking. So that would be part of the, any type of an approval process.
Okay. Dealing with the, dealing with your main entrance on Butternut Drive, is that going to be a private road or a public road?
Private.
Okay, that's going to be different, okay. Dealing with the destruction of the woodland and the ecological impact, how are you going to mitigate that?
We're going to replant a lot of trees, we're going to have a lot of lawn area, it's going to be maintained. Just, I'd like to go back and just answer one question regarding stormwater. We, the, the stormwater system, the blue stormwater facilities, that's the location, it's going to be somewhere along Butternut, that's the low area. There's two types of detention facilities, those that hold water and those that don't. If it doesn't hold water, it'll be a grassed area that will fill up with water and slowly discharge to its overflow point. If soils are poor, we'll have standing water, and to mitigate the, the mosquito concern as an amenity, it's our intent, if this, if it's poor soils, to have an aerator. If you aerate the water with a fountain, it'll If you aerate the water with a fountain, it'll, 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 it'll get rid of the mosquitoes. So our, so I think we got that one covered either way.
Okay, that was my neighbor. You know, the impact of flooding and stormwater runoff into Butternut Creek and surrounding wetlands.
We will, we will design this in full accordance of DEC regulations. We cannot set foot on this project site until our engineer meets every requirement provided by the New York State DEC and the town engineer also does a full review of this project and his review will include the review of stormwater, water pressure, water supply, traffic, sanitary, all of those things. And I, I just want to point that out, that we're probably in the first, the beginning stages of the project. We have a lot more, uh, engineering and calculations to do and we'll, we'll share that with you as we go.
And the stormwater, uh, has to be mitigated onsite, so. To, to receive any approval. All right, uh, can we move on to, I saw some other hands, who do we have next, Stephanie?
Well, I just wanted to say before you move on that I object to the project, but I wanted to just ask one thing, dealing with that attractive nuisance of the stormwater retention ponds proposed onsite. How are you going to enclose those from children, even not from onsite, but just children passing through, walking onto the property? Since there's going to be a walkway or a bike trail that other people can walk on there and God forbid, somebody drowns in one of these.
The quick, the quick, and there is no one sentence response to that, but I will say, stormwater facilities are designed with a gentle slope. Every three or four feet that you go out depending facility will drop one foot. I, I'm an avid biker and runner and I go on But- uh, Erie Canal. If you fell off the Erie Canal and went into the water, you, you could go two, three, four feet deep of water, no time flat. Here, it's going to have a gentle slope, i- if it holds water. Um, but drowning and, and safety is our concern and, uh, we'll certainly review that with the town engineer. Uh, yeah, that's something that we have to work on as a team.
And the planning board also takes that into, uh, very serious consideration. Uh, Stephanie, who do we have next?
Looks like Barb Stratton is up next and then Ann Donnie, who has another question.
Okay.
Ann again.
Barb?
Hi, I don't know if I'm, can you hear me?
You can hear you perfectly.
Okay, great. The round building that was mentioned earlier.
Excuse me Barb, could you give us your address, please?
Oh, I, I'm sorry, 6729 Kenny Road.
Thank you.
On the opposite side from the proposed structures. The round building that was mentioned earlier as a common area and dining, that key word. Set off an alarm for me. Um, apartments don't generally have dining. Um, assisted living programs have dining. That concerns me. Number two, sidewalks were mentioned. The town of Duett has no sidewalk districts anywhere that I'm aware of.
They do now.
Um, sidewalks from Erie Boulevard up through our neighborhood.
They still have sidewalks.
Never, probably never happened. We have very little walking space, I haven't had a trick or treater in 30 plus years. Parents and children just do not walk on this road. There's a few people that walk from shopping town to the town hall, maybe on a court night. Couple of people that walk their dogs, but there's very little foot traffic. Sidewalks have never been proposed for this area, just like streetlights have always gone down in flames for Kenny and Butternut. I'm really concerned. Mr. Lang on Sunday said two bedroom apartments would be 200, $2,200 for 20, 1,200 square feet. And 3,000 plus possibly for three bedroom apartments at 1,750 square feet. Now it is Thursday and that's all changed to just one and two bedroom. The other question I have is down the road, if this does get approved, God forbid, would the applicants, the developer be applying for payment in lieu of taxes? If the town is looking for tax money or the school districts are looking for tax money from this project and the applicants apply for payment in lieu of taxes, there's not going to be any gain for the town of Duett or the school district for years, years. Most of them are 10-year programs. I think that's pretty much my questions, my neighbor.
Barb, Barb, I would like to just interject, you mentioned the sidewalks, I just, I, I couldn't get the tone. Are you in favor or disfavor of sidewalks?
Sidewalks would have been wonderful for all the 30 years I've lived here, but they've never, ever been even proposed. Why would they all of a sudden be being proposed for this development?
Because the planning board's been requiring them, number one, uh, for new developments and everywhere possible, whether it's a commercial venture or, uh, the library is another example, we, we, we try to have interconnectivity and sustainability. So yes, they, there'll be a requirement.
Who will, who will build and maintain them? Most, most of the sidewalks that are currently in the town of Duett are required to be, uh, repaired and upkeep by the resident.
Okay, I will have, um, Tom or Jamie, who, who wants to respond?
About the sidewalks?
You want to take the sidewalk issue?
Oh sure, thank you. The, the sidewalks on our, uh, property, we would maintain. We would, uh, we would do all the maintenance. And, uh, Barb, um, let me answer your question. I'm going back to the, the building, the circular building seems to be, um, having been brought up a couple of times today. And, um, when Vaughn spoke of dining, what he was referring to is that's going to be our meeting and conferencing rooms, uh, it, you know, because I think we're going to have seniors here as well for family reunions, there will be a, uh, a fully equipped kitchen for the residents only in that circular building. That's what his intent, what he was alluding to the other day, it's, it's not, it's not for public use.
Yeah, none of the amenities, uh, Barb, uh, are.
That's right.
Are open to the public. They're all.
That's correct.
Enter, uh, for the residents only. Okay, thank you Barb.
Thank you, my only other comment is, it looks like a hotel.
Mm-hmm.
It's so modern, it looks like a hotel. Looks like it should have a, looks like beachfront, should be somewhere in Miami or.
Thank you Barb. Uh, there's somebody besides Ann, cause I just want to see if there's anybody else out there that wants a question and then we'll go back to Ann. Okay, hearing none, Ann, go ahead.
Okay, I just have two quick questions, I want to clarify something. You just said something about being a private road, are you talking about Butternut? Or are you talking about your entrance onto your property is going to be private?
Our property, connecting Kenny to Butternut.
All right, so you're not closing down Butternut?
No. We can't and we're not.
Okay, and you also just talked about your ponds. There's an ordinance in the town of Duett that you have to have a four-foot fence around any body of water. In-ground pools, above pools, things like that. Why are you not in that same variance that you have to have some kind of fencing? And when you say that there isn't a lot of traffic of kids, I beg to differ with you. There are kids that get off of school buses on Butternut that walk up into shopping town area. There are kids that come down from Topath and Kenny, down Butternut into our neighborhood. So there is foot traffic and there are kids. There's also parents that walk their kids safely on Butternut, not a lot, but sometimes. And, um, I don't think that you're going to be very safe, you're going to have an accident there. And are you talking about which Barb just discussed sidewalks? Are you planning and putting sidewalks on Butternut Drive up to East Genesee Street? And if so, how are you going to do that with the way the houses sit on Butternut? You got, they're right onto the road and then right across the street, you've got guardrails. That's it, I'm done, thank you.
We don't have the authority, we don't have the authority as a developer to build sidewalks on anything other than our property. Um, and I, I don't know where the confusion is coming from. I didn't say anything about children in the neighborhood or the, the neighbors having children. I just said that our project, the demographics do not speak to children, we won't have children residing at, um, the crossing.
No, 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 that's not what I meant, what I meant was you're, you're retaining ponds. How are you going to protect from a kid or whoever falling into these ponds at night?
Well, and these ponds will be designed, it's, it's a, it's really premature to try to answer all these questions because we don't even know if they're going to be holding water. But that said, they will be built to DE standards, town codes, they will meet all municipal codes. Um, these retention ponds that you're referring to, if you go into any new developments, Steinway, Mallard's Landing, uh, I can go on and on, every single residential development that was constructed in Manlis or Duett within the last 30 years has retention ponds. And the vast majority of these do not have any fencing. In fact, I would say, uh, essentially all of them don't have fencing. And I've never heard of an instance of someone drowning or even a complaint with mosquitoes. And these are upscale neighborhoods. Um, and I also could refer you to the swan pond. There's no fencing around the swan pond, there's walking trails behind the swan pond.
It's got a fence completely surrounding the swan.
No, no, there's a pond below the one you see off Fayette Street, there's a larger pond beneath that, yep.
How deep, how deep are your ponds going to be if they are filled?
We're, we have to get to the designs stage.
Okay.
There'll be more opportunity.
Transparent, we'll share the design with you, there's, there's literally four or five pond design options we could, we could end up with. One could be totally dry, one could be, uh, six, seven feet deep with a, with a fountain on it. I don't know yet, we gotta, we need to do our homework, we don't have that yet.
And just to clarify one more thing, when you said you're going to have a fountain in your ponds, um, it will not deter the mosquitoes. I had an above ground pool for years with a fountain, doesn't work. Because you have the feeder right across the street from it. And the feeder is what's generating the mosquito population down here, not your ponds. And until that's addressed, adding your ponds onto the feeder, make sure they have a lot of off.
Okay.
Okay, uh, thank you Ann, it looks like there's a caller with a question.
Um, Michaeline Bastow, I live at 6740 Kenny Road. Um, I have been living in the town of Duett for almost 30 years now, the last 18 on Kenny Road. And one of the reasons I bought my house was because I have a backyard with no one behind me, there are no houses, there are no parks and there are no other buildings. And, um, I'm concerned that this is this senior, I, is it, well, I have a question. Is this a senior complex, 55 and up?
What was the question, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear.
Is, is this a senior complex? 55 and up?
That's my understanding.
Okay, and so, um, there are families, um, especially nowadays that have children. I'm not talking about five and six years old, 55-year-old people that have, um, teenagers or young adults that moved back home or that lived home and never moved out. And so, we really don't know how many people are going to be living there. And I think it's, um, presumptuous to believe that the people that live there are moving to Florida for the winter. Um, when I bought my house, I learned to, I had to adjust to the, um, traffic noise from I, Interstate 481, as well as exhaust fumes which occur at certain times of the year when my windows are open. I'd like to be on record, um, to say that I object to the development of the vacant properties on Kenny Road and Butternut Drive, as well as the, um, zoning change from R2 to R3 and the parking variance. I don't feel that this development is necessary or appropriate in the proposed location on this small 11-acre parcel. And I know that the shopping town mall, um, eventually will be developed. I'm thinking that would be a great place to have senior apartments, if you were going to have senior apartments. Plenty of parking, 60 acres, way more than this tiny area on Butternut Drive and a big, a big building that looks out of place on Kenny Road. And the traffic, we do have a lot of traffic. If they do a traffic study, I think they should do it after COVID when Exelis is completely open and everybody's open again because I can hear traffic from my bedroom on the front of the house. And I can hear the traffic from 481 behind my house. And I'm not looking forward to having hundreds of people living down the hill from my house where I'm going to be hearing cars starting up, warming up in the winter, smelling the fumes. I just think this is a poor location and, um, I want to go on record saying that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have anybody else? It's getting a little bit late, we have a full agenda tonight. Uh, I, I want to, I want to thank everybody for coming and, uh, their thoughtful and, uh, comprehensive comments. I asked the applicant to take all of these questions under consideration and, and as the project, uh, as you review and, uh, develop this, it is in the very, very early stages. And nothing has been decided in terms of an approval, uh, or a recommendation to the town board regarding a zone change. So, uh, these have been very helpful to the planning board, we've asked some of these questions ourselves. And, uh, we look forward to, uh, working collaboratively with both the neighbors and the, and the applicant. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Okay, uh, Verizon Data Center. Do we have, there is, uh, this expansion of the, uh, the techno, the, um, equipment. My understanding is, is that, Andy, are you on here?
Yep, go ahead here.
That we're not, that based on the, the grandfathering, that the, the special permit that we don't need a, a ZBA approval.
Correct.
I not think that that was on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we'll talk about that, um, again.
Okay.
Jamie, quick question for you as well, do we have to close the public hearing?
Uh, yes.
Peter?
I, uh, make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second it, Joe.
All in favor?
I'll second it, Joe, yep.
Kevin, aye.
Kathy, aye.
Peter, aye. Thank you. Uh, we'll table the, um, Verizon Data Center discussion and we'll move on to Deer Road. Uh, is, um, I'm going to ask Stephanie to recuse herself, is Mark here? Mark Parrish. Nick or Andy, are you going to present this then?
Peter, Rob and I are here too.
Oh, okay. Joanne.
It's Joanne. Rob.
Yeah, we, what, uh, we, yeah, I know, but I've got to have, um, Mark.
Yep.
Um, well, th- this is just concept, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, we can, we can listen to the concept without, uh, Mark here.
Okay.
So we have Jo- Joanne and Rob and Rob who?
Rob Seely.
Seely, S-E-E-L-E-Y, from EBR.
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
So Rob, Don.
This is a modification of a warehouse, uh, there's some finer details, so do, go ahead, Joanne.
Yeah, our client, Don Di Stefano, is not with us tonight, so Rob's going to walk you through what they're, what they're thinking for the project.
Yeah, so a- a- as you mentioned Peter, this is a, a modification request to the approval that was obtained, um, at the end of October, for, uh, building two of the Deer Road development. You can see on the plans, I've, I've got revision clouds around the area that's changed, so the. So the proposed changes are at the east end of the building. And basically what they want to do is now that they have a tenant secured, they've requested two overhead doors on the end of the building for customer pickups. So it would be a similar condition to what's on the west end of Building 1 where Dale Tile currently is. So those would be pickups for customers with pickup trucks or vans or like a stake rack truck. There wouldn't be any tractor trailers over there.
Yeah, that was Mark's concern about the, the turning radiuses.
Oh, right. Yeah, no, just be smaller vehicles. All the tractor trailers would come into the back, unload, and then the side doors would be just for customer pickup. So there's two 12-foot wide doors, overhead doors, and one three-foot man door in between them. To add those doors, we had to reduce the row of parking by five spaces. So we went from 11 spaces on that row to six. The parking tab form has been updated on Sheet 101. So we're still within the required number of spaces. So we have 76 spaces and there's 67 required by code. So we're still, we're still good with the overall quantity. The planting has been adjusted to respond to this change. We've moved all the vegetation that was kind of spread along that face. We've moved it to the, to the north edge there to provide some screening of those areas. And the quantities are, I think we have maybe two less shrubs than we had before. That's about it there. And then the other component that was new was
Was there some signage?
Yeah, the, so we had talked about signage early on with Andy and Nick and he had told us to come back with a multi-tenant sign master plan. So that was included in this package. So it shows the signage proposed on the, on the 298 side over the entrances and then signage on the back to direct the, to identify the loading docks for each, each tenant on the backs. And then there's one new freestanding wayfinding sign proposed as well that would match, match the one on the north side that's existing, that has, there's a photo of it there. So those are, those are the changes.
We talked, we talked about this at work session. Mark did weigh in, but this is a concept review, so you're not expecting approval tonight, is that correct?
Yeah, I wasn't expecting it, but if
No, don't, no, no, no. No, I'm just wanting to get the, I'm not sure all the board members were in the work session. So I opened up to Kevin and Kathy and anyone else, Leif, that has any questions relative to this. Joe?
I'm, I'm good. I think there was just a question on the, the accessibility of that loading dock, but I think that got answered, so.
Yeah.
That was the primary concern, I thought. Everything else is pretty straightforward.
Okay, Kathy?
I'm fine with it as well, thank you, Peter.
Kevin, I'm fine, I'm fine too, Kevin.
Are we, Jamie, can we move this? Andy, are you?
Yes, if, if, are, is there, are we satisfied with the, the multi-tenant sign plan? Or do, you know, if we can just, I don't know that we really have looked at it all. I don't want to make any mistakes on it.
No, either, we had, somebody had mentioned the height of the, the wayfinding sign there, but I, I think everybody's comfortable with the traffic. Joanne, would you like to have approval on that aspect and then let us study the multi-tenant?
Sure, that's fine.
That'd be great.
So
I think the multi-tenant sign plan is going to require some variances as they're facing the back of the building there. That's what we've reviewed, Nick and I had reviewed today. But I think the sign, the multi-tenant sign package should be reviewed and approved separately.
Okay, let's, let's do that. That's sort of my, my instinct as well. So I'd like to make a motion to approve their, their site plan.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
We'll just put it there, approve the site plan, but not the signage or multi-tenant sign.
Correct, that was my intention.
Thank you.
We'll table the, the multi-tenant so we can study that and then make a recommendation to the ZBA once we have our hands around the location and all of the detail. So all in favor of the site plan?
Kathy, aye. Aye.
We fine.
Joe, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Kevin, aye. Unanimous, okay, thank you.
That's great. Just send us any comments you have on the sign package and we can make that revision again.
Yeah, I got to get a hold of, we need Mark to, Mark and Andy to get that to us and we'll review that. And we'll make that for the next, our next work session. I mean, we don't have to have a work session for this, but we'll meet on Tuesday prior to the meeting.
Joanne, I would, if I can just throw out, I think what I would try to do is I think they're both the same size as the ones in the front, is that correct?
Yeah, they're all matching what's there.
Or something. I, I would say that, you know, being the front of the property, that's your primary focus from traffic and really the, the principal purpose of the sign code. Once they're in off the, off the road and onto the property, I think it would probably be a good idea to try to reduce those a little bit to minimize some of the variances that you're going to need to get and keep them within the square footage limitation.
Okay. Sure, whenever you give us some idea of what you're thinking and we'll look at it too and revise it accordingly.
Okay. More questions, I'm sorry, Peter, is it the little square building out in the front, is that proposed to have signage on the backside of that as well or?
Yes, there's two proposed for that building and three for the, the two bigger buildings.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
They're, they're small, but yeah, they're there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thanks again.
Thank you for waiting through all that. And then Geiger Automotive, I've got a, actually have a resolution here that I, Kevin's the technology. This was, we're making a recommendation to the ZBA regarding the building setback for proposed 2,600 square foot automotive dealership. I think we've discussed this generally, is, are there any, I have the motion here, but before I make the motion relative to the, the height, are there any other questions from the board?
Where do we stand on the East Syracuse property line split? Is there anything holding us up from that end still?
Andy?
I'm not sure, but I see Chris Shields is on here. I didn't want to throw him under the bus, but maybe he can throw something out here for us.
Or the truck, or the truck for that matter. Just kidding.
As long as it's a Dodge.
Is Chris muted or?
No, I think he just commented. Do you want to make a, you want to address that from the East Syracuse municipality?
Yeah, what was the question?
I guess he is muted.
No, I think he said, what was the question? I think the question was, where does it stand as far as the approval process, Chris, over in East Syracuse?
I can't hear him.
I can't, I can't hear.
I can't hear a word he's saying.
Do you have a microphone? Better microphone, Chris.
I thought I heard something about him being, the project being before the East Syracuse Planning Board at the moment.
Okay. Does that, that doesn't impact our recommendation to ZBA, does it, Jamie?
We, and we've, and we, no, and we've already recommended to ZBA, but it's coming back to us for everything else. So it'll be good if we get a dialogue before then.
All right, did you want me to make that motion that I have or is this?
Sure, yes.
This is a variance modification tonight, motion to modify the recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals dated February 11th, 2021 as follows. This board having reviewed, revised the elevations for the project hereby recommends that the ZBA grant a height variance to allow for a building height on the front elevation of 25 feet 10, except as modified herein, the recommendation February 11th, 2021 is in full force and effect. That's the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second, Peter.
Okay, I heard Leif first. Thank you, and all in favor?
Kathy, aye.
Joe, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Kevin and Leif?
Aye.
All right, unanimous. So that recommendation will be made to ZBA. I think that's it for the agenda. Thank you all for your patience and, and listening. There's a lot to go on with the neighbors and we look forward to moving forward in the due diligence process of the Butternut. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move it.
Kathy, thank you. Second.
Joel's second. Joel's second.
Thank you, Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you, good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.